Welcome to the special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is October 30th, 2024. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Welsh has asked to be excused, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Carr?
Here.
Cosdine?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinkie?
Here.
Seven present unexcused. Thank you. Item 4 is ordinances and resolutions, forays as public hearings. We have a quasi judicial hearing, Resolution 300-24. Madam City Clerk, please read title.
Resolution 300-24, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, determining that North Medical Land Company, LLC, has or has not established vested rights with respect to the development of a new car wash facility on property described as tracks Calm-6 and Calm-8, Block 8053 of the plat of Entrada subdivision, as more particularly described herein. Property located at the intersection of Del Prado Boulevard North and Dan Le Duc Road, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding and based upon there being a requirement to disclose any ex parte communications, this would be the time to do so. But before you do that, I will disclose that the city manager, myself, and DSD staff did in fact speak with all of you individually in your one-on-one communications regarding this specific process and what was going to be presented. So I am disclosing that on behalf of all of you who are present here today. If there are any other ex parte communications to be disclosed other than what I have just identified, this would be the opportunity, time to do that.
Thank you. Other than what the city attorney mentioned, is there any other ex parte communications for any council members to disclose? Okay, seeing none, we will move on with the process here. This is a quasi judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And I will turn it over to staff.
Well, if I may, Mayor, at this point in time, because this was a request that came in for a vested rights determination, they submitted their application. It would be their responsibility at this point in time to establish whether or not they're entitled and have met the requirements for a vested right determination.
Okay, so we'll start off with the applicant.
Yep.
Petition. Come on up.
Good afternoon. I am Brian Stanley. I'm an attorney in Clearwater with Brian J. Stanley, P.A. I represent Bose Development Group, Inc., which is the applicant here, and I have filed the vested rights application on behalf of Bose Development Group. And our planned user of this property, which is Mr. Carwash, which is a nationally recognized car wash group, a car wash operator. In connection with this, as a preliminary, as I've spoken with Mike Struve and Cody, there are some facts that came to light in the staff recommendation report that we were not aware of, that might contradict some of the facts in the application and in my letter, which accompanied the application, which have to do with when the property owner may or may not have been aware of the pendency of the moratorium or the idea that the moratorium was being adopted. Out of the box, and in those comments in the staff recommendation report, it states that the developer perhaps knew or should have known of the possible adoption of the moratorium. That is not correct. The issue of the moratorium came to the developer's attention, and I can say as their legal counsel, my attention, when the initial comments were received from staff with respect to the applicant's to Bose's site plan submittal. And that was subsequent to the adoption of the moratorium. And so the three issues that we deal with in connection with this vested rights application, really what we're talking about is, is it fair, is it equitable to grant to Bose as the applicant the right to proceed with its site plan submittal, building permit submittal, with respect to a car wash here where the city code allowed this use by right? And we were not aware and spent money, spent time, spent effort attempting to develop this site? And the first of those three criteria or standards has to do with timing, and I think the city's staff recommendation report makes it clear that that standard has been met. So we received the, the city received our, the site plan application between March 20th and April 17th, and so we've met that requirement. The second requirement is, has the owner, or in this case, the applicant, my client, have we detrimentally relied to the extent that it would be fair for us to proceed with a car wash development program? And in my view, as the person who's been spearheading this and wasn't aware and was authorizing expenditures, it's imminently fair. The applicant here, Bose, and its operator, Mr. Carwash, were not aware of this, and we undertook significant due diligence investigations, design, planning, market analysis, and spent quite a bit of money, and we've submitted all those costs. I understand that the city, the staff recommendation report indicates that those costs may not have been sufficient, but they were significant. We did not close on the property on the basis of this, which is mentioned in the staff recommendation report, but we did spend quite a bit of money with engineers, architects, market analysis, legal fees, contracting for the property. And so we've, one of the issues that the staff recommendation report says is that the, those due diligence activities, that those would benefit the developer regardless of what the proposed development was. And it should be noted that the only proposed use of this property for Bose Development Group, Inc., is as a car wash. We're not in, we're not here to potentially buy this property and do whatever can be done. We are a national developer for Mr. Carwash. We came to Cape Coral, to this site, to develop a car wash specifically, and that's why those funds were spent, was because the city code authorized this as a by right use. And so we've spent that money. And so the next question is, would it be, on the basis of those facts, would it be inequitable to deny vested rights and then permit us to proceed, permit Bose to proceed with its site plan application, for which we have a first round of comments that we're ready to reply to, and the building permit application? In this instance, we believe that based upon the outlay of funds, it would be highly inequitable, and that Bose would be out a significant amount of money as a result of the adoption of a moratorium that basically occurred after we, as far as we're concerned, occurred after we had received site plan comments. In this instance, the moratorium at issue affects the entire city, and it basically prohibits car washes altogether. The conditional use ordinance, which the city has recently adopted, will allow for, under a conditional use scenario, will allow for car washes to be done potentially in some areas, and it provides some criteria. Some of those criteria we meet, and I've got a map here I can share, but I explain it, it's just as easy. If you look at a radius, so if the, a dot on the map of this location with one mile radius, two mile radius, three mile radius, there's one car wash within a three mile radius of this location. It's two and a half miles away, it's a Tommy's, and I don't believe they're open yet. And so in our view, the purpose of the ordinance that adopted the moratorium in this, in this instance, was really to deal with the fact that car washes were coming up everywhere, similar to the city's storage unit, self-storage ordinance, moratorium. In this instance, the, this property, this development, this car wash, really does not, the moratorium does not prohibit something here that deserves prohibition. This is an unserved area. Mr. Carwash has done a market analysis, traffic, residents, rooftops, and this is a, this is an area that could use a car wash and would be served by one. This is a piece of property that has not been developed for decades. It was originally intended, as far as I understand, based upon my look at title and the documents that were in the official records, for medical use. That hasn't happened, and to my knowledge, there have been no other development prospects for this piece. And so I really feel like this is a best use for this piece. And I really sort of plead with council members to think about the fact that this moratorium affects a gigantic piece of property, and it really may not be well suited for this parcel. And so the answer to that might be, well, you can use the conditional use. The problem is, we can't use the conditional use because, straight out of the box, some of the criteria in the conditional use ordinance cannot be met. In that regard, there is a requirement that 75% of the frontage for this parcel be located on a major corridor. In this instance, there's 120 feet roughly, based upon our survey, on that corridor, and there's a total of about 450 feet of frontage on a public right of way. Mike and I were talking about that earlier. There may be a debate over whether the, one of those rights of way is public or private, but at best, we have 50% frontage. In my view, it's probably 25%. So I think from the get-go, that standard, which I believe is non-discretionary in the conditional use ordinance, cannot be met. So we really don't have an alternative at that point, except a special exception. I've talked to staff about that, and what we'd really like is for the council to recognize that this property probably has no other readily available development opportunity, that a car wash would fit in this area, that the moratorium is so broad to affect the entire city, that it unreasonably imposes a burden on this property that's really undeserved. And so under the banner of vested rights, we'd really like for the council to allow us to proceed with the site plan approval or the site plan application, allow us to respond to the comments that we have to that, and then proceed with building permits. And in equity, the only real alternative we have at this point to do that is via this vested rights application. I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today. I appreciate the assistance and guidance that I've had from staff and council, and that's closing.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, City Attorney Boxner, and City Manager Ilchison, and City Staff. My name is Eric Feigthaler. I'm the managing partner of Brandon Adamsky Feigthaler Sanchez, a law firm here in Cape Coral, and I represent the owner of the property, North Medical, along with the primary principal of that organization, Hal Arkin. Hopefully, I won't repeat too much of what Brian said. I think most of this is somewhat unique, and I'm not really reading on behalf of the legal side of things, it's more on the, again, on the equitable and fairness side of things, and the history of the city to some degree as well. I think all of you and I are in a similar position, is that we hear about concerns about the city on a daily basis. I see, hear them from my clients, people that I've talked to from my past, and I know you do as well, and a lot of people say the same thing. Seem like there's a car wash on every corner. Car wash on Santa Barbara was put right down that residential lot, right next to it, where they filled in the canal partially, and those things were a concern that I know you all have heard. Same thing happened with our stores 10 years ago. You can see in that case, by the way, eventually they stopped because the demand did not, was not there anymore. In our case, I think that the concern that we all hear is it's a proximity to single-family neighborhoods and clustering them around each other. And as Brian pointed out, this location is, of course, on Del Prado Boulevard, one of our most major commercial corridors, and in this case, is not in proximity to any single-family residential properties. So where this ordinance may make sense, or these, not having vested rights would make sense for certain properties, I think this one makes very good sense to see that we should be granted them in this case. In the staff report, it is noted, one of the things noted is that the owner hired me to argue against the moratorium, and that is correct. It seemed to appear by that staff report that the developer must have known about it as well at the time of the commencement of due diligence because of my knowledge of it. I did go back in my records and noted that this property was contracted to be purchased back in September of 2023. It was over six months later that I had any knowledge of any kind of moratorium, and I did speak before this council on April 3rd, 2024, against the moratorium. And one of the things I pointed out at the time was that my strong opinion still is that the moratorium runs in contravention of Senate Bill 250, which bars those kind of, any kind of moratorium like that after Hurricane Ian, in this case. The owner and the developers, you know, proceeded after signing the contract, that they have incurred significant expenses, which Brian has already talked about, both before and after their pre-application meeting with the city in December, where there was no moratorium mentioned. The owner purchased this property nearly 18 years ago, in 2006, so pretty much near the peak of the commercial boom at that time. Like any buyer, he took into account what could be done with the property. What was the zoning? What were all the rightful and permitted uses on that property? These uses have included a car wash since the purchase in 2006. And like every good owner and good resident of our city, the owner has paid significant city and county taxes, HOA fees involved with Entrada, including funding the very important safety of the traffic signal that's nearby, and many other expenses relying on the public codes and regulations of the city. All the costs that my client has incurred have been incurred prior to the mention of a moratorium, except for the attorney's fees that he's paid me since April, which are several thousand dollars, but they're not significant in the big picture. Speaking of significance, I noted that staff has stated that the 124,000 minimum that the developer is out is not significant. And I would ask you, as a council and as individuals, the question, what amount would you deem significant to basically lose as a result of not being given vested rights in this? I think that if you spent $124,000 on building your dream home in Cape Coral, and then staff said, you know what, you can only build a restaurant there or build something else here that you have no interest in, I'm certain it wouldn't sit well with you. This, in essence, is what the city is proposing by not providing vested rights in this case, and then by having the new ordinance that was just passed, 6624, as Brian just pointed out, it's making it so it's impossible to go forward with the rights that everyone believed they had until very, very recently. The staff report also, in Section 3, asks whether the denial of the right to proceed would be inequitable to the owner. I trust you can see this is facially inequitable and terribly unfair to the owner, based on what you've heard today. The city did not advise the developer the potential moratorium at that pre-application meeting, so the developer went forward. As a result of that, the owner has spurred any kind of offers over the past 13 months. Staff acknowledged in that Section 2, it did not reach out to any affected parties, but rather put it on the developer and the owner to continually ask the question after the pre-application meeting. Might there be a moratorium? Should we stop our process? I don't think that that position serves the community or gives any kind of, really confidence in being business friendly. Once you have a pre-application meeting, I tell clients all the time, this is where you get to meet with all the staff, you get to see what the issues might be, and then you move forward. And that's exactly what the developer did in this case. Denying vested rights for the specific development will not lead to the benefit that's sought by the city, which is the clustering of these types of facilities around single-family residential. Again, we discussed earlier that there are no operating car washes within three miles of this location, no single-family neighborhood. It's the density that people have a concern about, and there is no car wash density issue in this section of our city. I want to speak about my, the owner for a moment, and I'm sure most of you know Hal Arkin. He's 76 years old, and he has spent his life promoting the commercial development of the city of Cape Coral, and his efforts have undoubtedly led to a higher tax base and innumerable jobs for our city. All he is seeking to do now is sell the property that he's been paying taxes on, doing everything he's supposed to do for 18 years as he enters retirement, and that's all he is trying to accomplish by selling to this arms-length and decent developer. Based on this, I humbly entreat this body, considering the substantial time and the money spent by the owner and the developer, and the reliance on our city's regulations, to invest in our city and receive a fair return on that investment, to vote that the owner and developer have established vested rights to develop this property. The process began in September with no knowledge of this potentially occurring, and they spent a lot of time and effort, again, until that April discussion in doing so. I ask that you support the vested rights application, and I stand ready for any questions you may have for me or for the owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Turn it over to staff.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Cody Von Birch, Assistant City Attorney for the city. With me today is city planner Mike Struve and Planning Manager Amy Yearsley. I won't reiterate the criteria. The applicant has laid out the three criteria that we're here to address today, as specified in the moratorium. They are correct in that criteria. Number one is indisputed regarding the timeframe in which they submitted a plan to be eligible to claim vested rights. It is regarding the other two criteria that you've heard some comment about. And what you are going to hear through the testimony of Mr. Struve and the evidence that the city will present today, is that what has been represented in the evidence of the applicant regarding their lack of awareness is very difficult to reconcile with what we know about the actions of the actual owner of this property, and their participation in hearings and discussions about these moratoriums going forward. The evidence that has been presented, which is what we're bound to rely on pursuant to the moratorium ordinance, is unclear regarding when dollars were spent. It's your task today to evaluate some of that spend for reasonableness and significance. The evidence and testimony is going to show that the bulk of these expenditures are typical at-risk, due diligence, pre-acquisition dollars, dollars that a developer might typically spend prior to making the significant investment of actually purchasing the land. There's also been some suggestions in the testimony and evidence that you will hear regarding equity and fundamental fairness. There's been some argument that through no fault of the applicant whatsoever, they had no way of knowing, and somehow there was a burden on the city to proactively reach out. What you're going to hear is going to not support that there was no duty on the city, and the testimony that you'll hear will support that the information that was provided to the applicant at all times was accurate at the time it was given. I will suggest that the evidence and testimony that you're going to hear will support a finding of the applicant not being vested, and that is the recommendation, the motion that we'll be asking for later. With that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Struve to give a presentation and some information regarding this matter and his staff report.
For the record, Mike Struve, Planning Team Coordinator with the Planning Division. I want to start off for just a very brief moment of hitting on several topics that I'm not going to discuss today, and that you're not going to hear from me. You're not going to hear from me talking about where the nearest car wash is in relation to the site. You're not going to hear from us talking about the suitability of the site for any particular use. You're not going to hear us talking about high-end vest use of this property. It's not because that those factors aren't valid or unimportant in a different context, but none of the criteria that are listed in the car wash moratorium directly speak to those types of considerations. So I'm going to focus on the three different standards that appear in the moratorium ordinance. The first one, which I don't think is in dispute, applies to when the site plan came in for review with the city, and that was between March 20th and April 17th, when the moratorium went into effect. So that standard has been met, and I don't think there is any dispute on either side about that. I'm going to move to the second standard now and discuss with you whether the applicant relied on the city, to their detriment, on information that we had provided to them, and then transition in a second or two to this issue of whether or not the developer has extended a substantial amount of funds toward permitting this project. So first, talking about this idea of reliance on city information to their detriment. I want to unpack this in sort of a chronological standpoint. When the developer first approached the city and scheduled a pre-application meeting, and that was back in December 19, 2023, the city was not considering a moratorium at that time. To my knowledge, there were no discussions internally, even among staff, about looking at a moratorium for any use in the city. That occurred about 30 days later. So the information that we provided the applicant at that time was accurate and in good faith. I want to sort of transition a little bit later. Another way of demonstrating good faith is to, is to make sure that all of our public hearing requirements are met, and we did have public hearing requirements that we followed as a result of this moratorium. The moratorium was introduced in a public setting on March 20th, and shortly thereafter, articles in the, in the local media began to appear, as well as spots on television and radio. And in your backup materials for this case, we have provided you with several examples that are not exhaustive of any way, but representative of some of the articles that appeared in regards to, not just the car wash moratorium, but also the storage moratorium, since they occurred on the same day. And a lot of the press coverage chose to include both in their articles and also in their newscasts. And those articles appear in Exhibit 13 of your public information packet. We also had two public hearings concerning both moratoria, both the storage and the car wash moratoriums. Those occurred on April 3rd and on April 17th. Both of those public hearings were advertised, and we've included in your backup material copies of those ads that were placed by the city clerk, and those are shown in Exhibit We had turnout at both public hearings for those, for both moratoria. One thing that we also want to clear up is that when we look at the term developer, we are looking at that broadly, and we're looking at that not to only include Bose, but to the property owner. North American Land Company, or Medical Company owns, continues to own the property right now, so that would include the current owner as well as the consulting firm that's working on behalf of the, of Mr. Carwash. That's important to keep in mind, because the owner is required to sign- That's important to keep in mind, because the owner is required to sign applications for entitlements, for site plan permits, and even for this vested right application. The current owner of that property, Mr. Arkin, did appear at the public hearings both on April 3rd and April 17th. He spoke at the public hearings concerning the storage moratorium. He's not on record and didn't speak on the moratorium concerning a car wash. However, both cases were on the same agenda, and both cases were placed on the agenda back and back. So in our view, it is incongruent with the facts that the current owner was unaware of the moratorium that was being discussed at least as early as April 3rd. It may not have been that the owner chose to share that information with Bose, but that really is between the owner and his development team in terms of who he chooses to share that information with and when he chooses to share that information with. In regards to substantial expenditures as it relates to this project, we are in no way saying that $174,000 is insignificant or inconsequential. And the reason why we are latching onto that term, even though the applicant has intimated that they've spent more money towards the project, and we're not disputing that, but the reason we're focusing on that dollar figure is because that is the amount of money in their application that they could document that they've spent to this point. $50,000 of that appears to be related to a refundable deposit on the land, so that leaves roughly $124,000. Again, if that is your personal savings, or that's a 401K, that might be looked at in one way and certainly would not be insignificant. But in the context of trying to fully entitle a property for a particular type of use, what we think this represents is a project in its infancy, based on the amount of money spent. Much of that cost, about $70,000, appears to be devoted to the design of the project. Had the developer also submitted building plans for this particular project at that time? Or if they had gone to the step additionally in terms of acquiring the property, that certainly would have involved a much greater expenditure of funds and would have caused us to look at this quite differently. In terms of the third standard, the third standard speaks to the issue of would it be equitable, or would it be inequitable, in this case, for the council to deny the developer to move forward with their project? And it speaks to this idea, again, of fairness. So again, I want to approach this from several different standpoints. Again, staff provided information that, at that time, was accurate and was timely. The public hearings for both cases were advertised, and the minutes reflect that the owner was in attendance at both city council meetings. We are not in a situation where we are denying the developer the ability to develop their property. The property has C zoning, which is one of our more common zoning districts, and allows, I should say, a wide array of uses, all the way from restaurant to office to retail to service-related uses. In addition to that, we do believe there are opportunities or paths forward for the developer to develop the property with a car wash use, albeit with a design that would be different than what they're currently showing, because they would be falling under a new set of regulations that you recently adopted for car wash uses. So in short, in a case like this, the burden of proof is on the applicant to demonstrate compliance with all standards. Our review of this application, based on the information that the developer submitted to us, and based on the three standards that appear in the moratorium ordinance, based on our analysis, indicates that they failed to meet the standards related to showing that they have been detrimentally harmed by information provided by the city, that the amount of expenditures that they have devoted to this project do not rise to the level of substantial, and that there is not an issue in regards to unfairness or inequability in terms of the city, should they decide to not approve this vested rights application. Now I'll turn it back over to our Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you again, Cody Von Birch. At this time, I would like to introduce the staff report as City's Exhibit A, and we have a composite Exhibit B of the exhibits that have been referenced. I have provided a copy to the applicant previously and confirmed with them that there is no objection to the entry of said evidence. I'll go ahead and give those to the clerk now. And again, we submit this evidence in support of and in furtherance of a recommendation that there's a finding of no vested rights today. I think Mr. Struvey did a fine job of going through the pertinent points of what needs to be raised and discussed today. We are within a limited scope of review as designated by the moratorium ordinance, and as you've heard, we're really focusing on some fairness principles. A lot of that does boil down to what did the applicant know, and when did they know it? The evidence that they have provided regarding their expenditures does not include when those expenditures were made. Based on that evidence, it is difficult to evaluate whether those expenditures would have been made were they alerted to certain information regarding this moratorium that the city believes the owner of the project had. With that, we would respectfully request this body to move for a finding that there's a finding of no vested rights today. We make ourselves available for any questions.
I'll give the applicant's opportunity for any rebuttal.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Just one anecdote to mention, as you know, I don't come here very often, but the one time I did about a year ago was when you had the issue on the Pine Island Road corridor, and you reached that residential unit cap that had been kind of been forgotten about. And as you'll recall, we had to send to Tallahassee the comp plan to increase that number, and this council noted the time, effort, and reliance on the code as we believed it was, as the city staff told those developers that it was, that those that were already in for permitting, those were the number of units that you put to Tallahassee to be increased, and no more than that. And I think this issue is very much parallel to that situation. So I think if you consider that precedent, that in this one, again, very, I think, somewhat unique case, as you're looking at the moratorium, that we should be granted those, and we have earned those vested rights, and I hope that you'll consider voting that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. At this point...
Very quickly, just to clarify one point of fact. The costs that have been submitted, as Bose's costs here, are all expenditures that occurred prior to the date that we received the comments to the site plan approval application. Those are all costs that were incurred, and we essentially stopped everything once the moratorium became known to Bose. Just to clarify that state of facts, those funds were spent before we were aware and in reliance on the fact that the city code allowed for this use. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Based upon what has been presented, it is, again, the city attorney's position, along with DSD staff and the city manager's office, that there has been, in fact, a failure to establish a vested rights for the actual new car wash facility on the property that has been described herein. At this point in time, I would request that, based upon their failure to meet the requirements as it stands right now, that there be a motion made denying their request, that they have failed to establish that vested right, and that there should be a resolution to that effect. And if with that, I certainly will... And that is based upon the staff report and the documentary evidence that was introduced in support of that denial.
Thank you, Councilmember Long.
Mr. City Attorney, can you clarify the language of that proposed motion again, please?
Yeah, so the motion would be that there would be that North Medical Land Company, LLC, has not established a vested rights with respect to the development of a new car wash facility on the property that has been identified herein, based upon what has been submitted in terms of the staff report and the documentary evidence in support of that staff report. That would be the motion.
Madam City Clerk, may I make a motion to that effect?
And is there a second to the motion? We have a motion and a second, and I'll open it up for any discussion. Councilmember Carr.
I have just a couple of questions. I'm not sure who can answer them, but with regard to the comments related to, I don't think I saw this in the report, associated with the site plan comments from staff, what were those comments, and what was the date of those being sent? I think the submittal was on the 11th of March, if I'm coming off of memory, but then the reply for the site plan comments, can you give me the date of that?
So Councilmember Carr, the site plan, the different reviewers finished their comments at different times, and those comments were finished by individual reviewers roughly in the time period from late April of this year into May.
So we continued with the site plan review post-moratorium enactment? Is that by the timeline correct on that? The moratorium went into effect on the 17th of April?
Yes, we did a first review because the site plan came in before the moratorium went into effect on the 17th.
Okay, so our first correspondence with the developer about the site plan came on what date? Do you have the date?
I do not have a specific date for that, when the comments would have been either available or would have gone out en masse to the developer. It was likely in May sometime.
The other question was with regard to the significant amount of money definition, there is no bright line definition for that, correct?
You are correct. There's no real definitive bright line whether or not X amount of dollars establishes that vested right. The position is, as it stands right now, from the city, is that the monetary funds expended are not sufficient enough for there to be a determination of entitlements to proceed forward with the construction of the car wash based upon the previous law.
Okay. And the last question, and again, based on the three criteria that we're assessing on today, the third question has to do with information provided by the city. Does that have to be overt communication, or can it just be the reliance on city code?
And for clarification, are you referring to... And what are you referring to specifically?
In other words, I think the third criteria that we're assessing is the information was detrimental, the information provided by the city was detrimental to the developer.
That's correct. So if you recall, the testimony of Mr. Struvey was, at the time that the pre-application occurred, there was nothing in the foreseeable future that there would be a moratorium. Any communication that occurred between staff, DSD staff, and the individual was, in fact, accurate, and it was correct. But more importantly, we have always taken the position that the pre-application does not entitle you to anything. It is nothing more than a pre-application, and that in of itself is not legally sufficient to give you any type of rights to do anything unless you, in fact, do something more. The more that occurred here, based upon what we've determined, is not legally sufficient to entitle them to a vested rights determination as it stands right now.
Understood. And taking the pre-application meeting out of the assessment, are our city codes enough? In other words, are city code also considered information provided by the city? Or does it have to be an overt communication like in a pre-app meeting?
No, our city code is sufficient. There's an obligation to do due diligence, but more importantly, what we did have is documentary evidence in support of the fact that as early as March, it was already publicized that there was, in fact, going to be action taken potentially for a moratorium on car washes. So there is documentary evidence in support of that.
March 20th was the intro, correct?
Yeah.
And March 11th was the application by the developer?
The application was submitted on April 11th, if I'm not mistaken, which would have been...
April 11th?
April 11th.
So post-intro?
That is correct.
And post-first hearing?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought it was three 11s, four 11s? Okay.
It was four 11s. And then we also have to be mindful of the fact that there's publications out there as well.
Correct, and we met our legal obligations with regard to this.
We did.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you, Mayor. Am I able to ask a question of applicant counsel?
You sure can.
Yes. Good.
Yes? And I'm not sure whether it would be Mr. Feickholler or who, but is there a particular reason, because I very much remember the current property owner coming before counsel as it related to the storage moratorium with regard to a property further west in the city? Is there a particular reason why, if this was happening all at the same time, there wasn't a concern relating to the car wash potential while he was present at the meetings?
So from Bose's, Mr. Carwash's perspective, we weren't aware that those meetings were going on and those ordinances were being discussed? I can't speak for the owner, but I can tell you from the applicant's perspective, we had no idea those were happening until we received those comments, and I believe the date was May 9th that those comments were issued.
And I know Mr. Feickholler has some real estate background, obviously. Isn't the burden on the seller, if you would, to provide full and fair disclosure to a potential buyer?
Certainly, yes. And the contract signed seven months prior, again, based on everything the city provided and the code of ordinances, everything was disclosed. And upon the, when I was here talking that date, it was on the self-storage issue, and basically, when I provided that information, I don't know if counsel had any kind of discussion or not, my recollection was you voted for it without discussion, so it seemed it would not be a good use of time to speak on the second one, which is identical and was also clearly going to pass.
Okay. Thank you for the answer. For me, this is a tough one for me, because I'm a pretty strong property owner rights advocate for a variety of reasons. Although, being a quasi-judicial hearing, we're put in a position of the interpretation and application of the law, not an opinion or feelings, and one of the toughest part about this is the fact that two of the three components involve fairness. And so how do you develop legislation around fairness, which is what a quasi-judicial hearing is all about? What does the law say? What's the letter of the law? And go by the letter of the law. And so the interpretation of what's fair and what's not fair is really... And so the interpretation of what's fair and what's not fair is really, really tough for me. So the thing that is most important to me in making a decision on this is definitely the timing, and then who is responsible during a course of time where changes can happen legally, going back to quasi-judicial? If changes can happen legally, then who's responsible to let all parties know that something has changed? And so for me, as the potential for the intended use was very publicly apparent that it was changing, and that the owner of the property did not bring that into play is a concern of mine. The second is around the invested dollars and being involved in some real estate transactions that I know. Oftentimes, the buyer won't invest a penny until they know they can absolutely do what they want to do there. And so while a determination had not been made yet, and while it actually had not been put in place, the moratorium had not been put in place until April 17th, dollars invested prior to April 17th, that's the roll-in-the-dice deal, in the hopes that things go our way, we'll have all our ducks lined up, and we won't waste any time, although do we risk going ahead and investing these monies to make sure that, you know, that the fire flow tests, the site development plan, and the costs involved with, you know, engaging, you know, an engineer, a designer, that is risk money in this deal, and the determination of when to spend that or potentially invest it, I think, is everyone's choice. And the gamble is to invest it early, and the more conservative way is to, hey, let's first make sure all of the applicable law will allow us to build this, and then we'll take a look at the actual site-specific things, like, you know, boring-for wells and fire flow tests and the rest. So it is a tough one for me. I don't see a whole lot of lights on. I do see one now, because I was hopefully going to get some input. I do appreciate the perspective of all eight members of this council. So I've said what I need to say, I do see another light on, so that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Long.
Thanks, Mayor. And again, we talk about perspective, and for me, I think I'll defer right back to staff. I think they did a great job kind of laying it all out for us, these things, particularly the more legally involved they are. I lean heavier on the staff and their report and their, you know, understanding of what's going on, or explanation of what's going on. You know, we keep talking, or there hasn't been too much discussion, but the timeline, I think we set aside early, right? I think as far as the timeline is when they got in the door of one of the three criteria, I think, you know, to use Mr. Struve's words, there was no dispute. But I think when you start talking about some of the expenses and those sorts of things, you kind of have to gravitate back towards the timeline to put everything into perspective. And so the timeline, when we talk about, Councilmember Steineke talked about, well, what about the timing and who's responsible, and when are we, you know, is there any on us on the city or the staff to reach out to these individuals and let them know? That's a legitimate question, but I don't know that it's applicable here, because we have in the materials before us and in the staff report that, I think, more likely than not, the individual did know that this was in the pipeline. In fact, the property owner was cited in the news press, talking about it in April. That's in our materials, and then in the petitioner's application in writing, and then, of course, under testimony here today, they said that they were not aware of it until May 24th, when the city issued their staff report. So that's particularly concerning to me. So then, when you talk about that, and then you go back to fairness, fairness works both ways, right? And you've got to operate in good faith. And, you know, I think when you put everything in totality and you look and you say, well, the staff also talked about the expenditures, because that's a big portion of, you know, when did the expenditures, when were they incurred? And I believe the staff said that we don't have, at least in its totality, dates on a lot of those expenses. And so were they born up front, or were they born after they were aware, and again, to me, at the very least, April 13th, you know, when they were quoted in the newspaper regarding this, when did those expenses take place? So did they incur those expenses afterwards, and then they just had to brute force their way forward with expenses to use as sort of a pity sword to look back on and say, hey, two of the three elements are regarding fairness and reliance, detrimental reliance, and expenditures? You know, all those things, when you put them together, I think, you know, put a good bow, so to speak, on the staff report and their recommendation of denying the petitioner's request, and so that's what I'll be supporting. Thank you.
Any other discussions from counsel? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steineke?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
No.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Thank you very much, everyone, for coming today. We'll move on to item number five, the citizens' input time. The maximum is 60 minutes, except for the input citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. Anyone wishing to participate in citizens' input, please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Time and place of future meetings, we have a regular council meeting. The Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for today, Wednesday, October 30th, 2024, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.